Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Excuse me. Please be aware of the fire exit which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs, and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record minute, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microroom. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Excuse me again. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Don, if you would introduce our first and only matter before us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, you want to mention that we're not going to do anything regarding the ALDI application tonight? There may be some people here.
By the way, there's nothing being discussed regarding the ALDI application tonight.
Thank you.
PB 1310-1, upon the matter of request by TY Lin International, acting as agent for McDonald's USA LLC, for revised site plan approval to reconstruct a 40-square-foot building addition, reconfigure the drive-thru at a second lane, with related site improvements on premises 657 East Ridge Road in a C commercial district.
Yes, I am.
Yes, you are.
My name is Jack Buholz. I'm with TY Lin International. I'm an engineer there. I'm here representing McDonald's in this application. We made an application October 7th, and we revised that, resubmitted it last Friday. Basically, this is to add a side-by-side operation for ordering to increase efficiency at this McDonald's, and it also includes the addition of a 40-square-foot payment booth on the side of the building, too. Those are the main things that are being added for this. From the...we had a workshop application on the 14th, and there were several comments there, many related to landscaping, and we made some changes associated with that. One thing is that we added a lot of landscaping out of East Ridge Road in front of the building and on the island behind the drive-thru. We went from an application that showed 24 shrubs and no trees to an application that shows 182 shrubs and eight new trees. We added a new curved island, and I can point at these things if it's...anybody wants me to. We added a new curved island.
There is a handheld mic you can take with you.
As I mentioned...this isn't very straight, is it? As I mentioned, we added landscaping up here, kind of restored landscaping that once existed in front of the store, added quite a bit back in here, added landscaping here, and added trees here, 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 and here. The cash booth was added right here. It's actually within the curb and within the overhang, and it just allows an additional step. Takes a little bit of the effort from the person serving the food. There's somebody before to take the payment, which increases the efficiency and reduces the time involved for this. We added a curved island here in this area. If you were to look at what we sent in before, which was the 7th...this was the striped island here. So we put in a curved island here, and if you notice, this was the curved island at the back of the drive-thru was there, kind of a narrow, short thing, and that now looks like this. So that was added quite a bit of area and landscaping there. And we also have decreased the impervious area by 500 feet from the previous application and by 300 feet from what exists today, so we have more green area, too. In the discussion at the workshop, there was a request to take this area and to landscape it and reshape it as necessary for the truck to get through. We did go back to our client for that. Their concerns with that were...they are observing that there are a number of people who are parking here to use Burger King. They have a concern about giving up parking spaces in that...for that reason. A second concern they have is that this area here is for trash pickup, for trucks to come in, maneuver, pick up the trash and leave, and they were concerned about access if they were to pave this. Also, there's drainage that comes this way. We're trying to avoid modifying the drainage in this area, and that would cause a change in that. So those are some reasons. And finally, I guess, we've added quite a bit of landscaped area here and here that we think would compensate for the landscaping that we would have picked up there. The owner was not comfortable with curving that. As you may know, today, there are arrows here, but there's no striping, so what...this sheet doesn't show it very well. Your site plan will show that this striping will continue all the way up...I'm sorry, it does show it. The striping is now continued all the way up to this island in an effort to keep the people entering in this lane, so they'll come up here, see this, and they'll come around this way to try and avoid people from jumping and coming up through here and disrupting traffic. So cars entering from Hudson will be required to go like this and follow the arrows, come around here if they want to do the drive-through. That's really my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer questions if I can.
Larry, maybe you could introduce the seeker form.
Sure. And before I do that, we did get a letter back from Monroe County Department of Planning and Development, and they've reviewed the application, and they do not have any comment on the application. What I handed out to you with the 11 by 17 is the city of Rochester. The back part of the parcel is in the city, and they've issued a cert of zoning compliance to modify existing drive-thru to convert from single to double. They don't have a problem with it either. Because this application was received after October 7th, the new seeker short form needed to be used, so the applicant filled out a new form, which should have been sent to you on Friday in your packages. Nothing really changes on Part 1. Part 2, what's important is there's a very nice little checklist to go through, and then Part 3 allows the planning board chairman to sign off on the environmental significance. So I will go through the Part 2 impact. Number 1, will the proposed action create a...now, remember, the action is the double drive-thru. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? My...and I had checked the "no." Are any board members...all board members in agreement with that? Number 2, will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? And I had checked the "no" box. Number 3, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? And I had checked the "no" box. 4, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area known as a CEA? And I had checked the "no" box. Number 5, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways? And I had checked the "no" box. Number 6, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I had checked the "no" box. 7, will a proposed action impact existing public water supplies? I had checked "no." Will a proposed action impact B public wastewater treatment utilities? I had checked "no." 8, will a proposed action impair the character or quality of an important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resource? And I had checked "no." Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, examples wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? And I had checked "no." Last page, number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? I had checked "no," and as we heard tonight, there's actually a decrease of hard surface and an increase of green space. Also, I will note that by having a more efficient drive-thru, there will be less idling of cars, so as far as any impact on energy, it's a more efficient operation. Number 11, will a proposed action create a hazard to the environmental resources or human health? And I had checked "no." Determination of significance, the lead agency is responsible for the completion of Part 3. For every question in Part 2 that was answered moderate to large impact may occur, and we did not...based on my analysis, and I didn't hear anyone in opposition, there's a need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. Please complete Part 3. Part 3 should, in sufficient detail, identify the impact, including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce impacts. Part 3 should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. Each potential impact should be assessed considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility...
Irreversibility.
Geographic scope and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short-term, long-term, and cumulative impacts. And because we did not check anything in the moderate to large impact column, I consider this not applicable. And so, at this point, I think that the lead agency, the Aronacoid Planning Board, can make a determination whether this is basically a neck-deck.
So this form, we're going to be getting just two more and more.
I just had one question about it, and I don't think that it's...I don't think it's ...there'll be a big impact, but I'm just wondering if the traffic flow is expected to be any different. Specifically, do we expect to have more egress onto Ridge Road East with the...with any changes that have been made to the traffic flow around the periphery of the lot?
Well, one thing Larry said, and I...the checkbox is "no" or "small impact may occur."
Right.
So, in my opinion, I don't know that we need any empirical data on it, but it might be a small impact that they could serve more people, but there's only so many people the restaurant could serve regardless.
Yeah, I wasn't so much concerned about the number of people as I was with the...does it become more...does the traffic flow incentivize you to leave via Ridge Road East rather than via Hudson Avenue? I think the ingress is going to be the same because you're really not changing anything with that, but I'm just wondering, does anyone...I don't think that it'll make a big change, but do we expect more traffic to be coming out onto Ridge Road as a result of the change in the traffic flow around the building?
It would be hard to say, obviously. If I wanted to go south on Hudson, I would go around the clock and go to Hudson and then take a right and go south. I wouldn't go down to Hudson and then try to take a left across traffic and go north. But I think the important thing, kind of came up about a week ago, was that Monroe County is just completing a $12 million reconstruction of Ridge Road that's gone on for almost three years, and in the county submittal to the DRC, the only comment from Tom Cesario at Monroe County Department of Transportation was, "Confirm no work will be performed in the Monroe County right-of-way." Also labeled the portion of Hudson Avenue located in the town of Aronacoid is County Road 112, not State Highway #15, because it is county jurisdiction. And that was the extent of the county DOT comments, so this also kind of came up with the tractor-trailers turning in. Whatever they've got out there has just been installed. It was actually designed by TY Lin for Monroe County, and they're satisfied with that entrance out for a road.
We're not really affecting the traffic pattern on the site. I mean, other than the fact that there's...if there's the same amount of vehicles, the stacking area is less because they're in two lines or be able to move to two lines and then weave back through. But, I mean, people have always been going, getting their food if they want to go back out. That's the same way they're doing it. You know, if they want to go back out to Hudson, it's not going to change their choice based on this improvement. It's the same.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it up to see if there's any...if anyone saw if any need to...I don't think that it's going to be a lot different, but I think that it might...you might have a few more cars coming on Ridge Road, and I don't think it'll be...
Yeah.
Be large.
Did you have any other questions, Jay?
Yeah, I did do...Mr. Chairman, I...normally, I...did you say that there's going to be 500 square feet more of green space?
It's actually 300 feet more than exists today and 500 feet more than our previous application showed.
And I was looking for that on the site plan. I don't see that...I don't see it on the site plan.
Yeah, I don't think it's listed. You could add it.
Usually, that's something that we list on the site plan. That's why I'm wondering.
Are those numbers reversed? Because I think it's counterintuitive what you said.
No, it's true. When we originally did our application, it included like 200 square feet.
Here you go.
And when we...
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry. And when we made this modification, we added this extensive island back here and expanded some other areas. We found that we actually were increasing to 300 feet above what exists today.
All right. I understand now.
So what's the percent impervious now, and what's it going to?
Yeah, it's about...there's 1.5 acres of area, and it's 1.1 acre impervious, including the building and all hard surfaces, and it's 0.4 acres of green space. So it's about just under 40...
So it's still...it's greater than the...what is it, 20% in commercial? It has to be, so it's still well...
Yes, it's above that.
Well, within the acceptable range. Okay. Other than that, it would be good if there's some way to make sure that...I mean, there's a whole bunch of plantings there before, and they've gone away. And, I mean, it's great that we're putting all these plants in, but the real rubber hits the road, you know, next spring or two springs from now, when it's going through a few winters. We want to make sure that the plantings stay up, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Rich?
Just a couple of things. You know, obviously, the reason you want to do this, I think, is a valuable reason, and I think keeping the cars from stacking up and potentially affecting Ridge Road is very admirable, aside from the business reasons that you want to do it. I also appreciate the quick turnaround time from our meeting two weeks ago, and you got a lot of plans to us on time and in good order, so I appreciate that. We had brought up adding this new island for those people that come in off of Hudson. I think the way you've designed it works well. I think a person coming in off of Hudson and getting to that island will see the sign and know that they have to go around the building. Combining that with the new island that you added adjacent to the flow of the cars through the drive-thru is going to really give people a clear indication of the direction they have to go. We had brought up on the west side, the hash-marked area, that we would have liked to see that be green space, but, you know, it has to look good, but it also has to work, and your input that they're not going to be able to empty the garbage, and it's going to really restrict the flow. If that were a curved area, makes sense to me, and, you know, we understand that. I understand that, I should say. I can't speak for anybody else, but... And then lastly, the landscaping that we've talked about, I agree with what Jay said, but more importantly, we need to get that landscaping done, and it's got to look nice, and we appreciate that. That's it.
Ray?
Curious. Just a question. I'm looking at S2C on page C1, and you're talking about...wait a second. Proposed directional drive-through. Is that analogous to number 11 in the general notes where we're talking about a new loop detector?
I'm sorry, what drawing is this, please?
On page C1, four of 10.
C1, I'm sorry. C1, okay, and the question is, again, please?
I'm looking at S2C, which is saying a proposed directional drive-through. Is that analogous to where new loop detectors are required?
No. It is a sign, and it is...let's see. S2C. I'm looking for it so I can point it out to you. You will see one...
Or is that...
At the north end or the west end of that large landscaped area that we just added at the...on the outside of the drive-thru curve, you'll see it. There's a sign there that says, "Proposed directional drive-through." That is not illuminated, but that will tell a person coming in from Hudson that they should turn to the right.
That was my next question. If it would be or would not be, you know, illuminated as you're coming?
Well, you would see it if you had your headlights on, because it's right, but it's...it is not...it is not an illuminated sign.
Okay. And you say in 12, "Final placement of the menu board to be reviewed." That would, I'm sure, be illuminated as well? Where do you anticipate...
I'm sorry.
Under general notes on the same page?
Yeah.
Number 12?
The menu boards are shown on this, and they are, I believe, is it S6? Let me see. Yeah, S6, there is...the menu board is generally next to the...you can see it when you're adjacent to the...where you put your order. You can look and see the menu board. So if I'm in my car here and I'm...ordering is here, I'll see the menu board there. So you'll see one of the menu boards is located kind of...there's an internal angle for the...between the two drive-thru lanes, and toward the east corner of that, you'll see one of those, okay?
But that's where it would be, so...
That's where that one would be, and then the other one for the people on the inside curve is a little bit farther to the east on the inside of it. Let me show you here. This isn't shown here, but one is here, and one is here. I don't know if you can see them, but...
They're those little trapezoids.
Yes, correct. Those are illuminated, yes.
I'm with it. I see it now. I see it where it's covered. Forgive me.
Yeah, it's...
I see it. It's covered by a...
There are a lot of things here to catch, yeah. A lot of detail on this.
Any other questions?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Would it be Bernie?
No questions.
Greg?
Go back to Ray's comment there about S2C, the directional sign?
Yes.
Coming in from Hudson Avenue?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be more purposeful if that were just to say all traffic? You say you call out the drive-thru going to the right, but really, all traffic is supposed to be going that way.
That's a good point. Yeah, I think it would be...I think it would be good if it said that. That might be a condition that might be put onto this.
I'd like to see that. I'm fearful that, especially since...
Greg, can you put your microphone down?
I'm sorry. I'm especially concerned since we're...and a little bit disappointed that we're going to keep that pavement on the west side of the property. As long as that stays blacktopped, I'm concerned about people coming in there and going left and then getting in a real crunch over on that side of the property. So if it was made very plain that all traffic was to go to the right as you come in off of Hudson Avenue there at that sign, I think that would alleviate any confusion. My second point goes back to something Peter brought up at the last meeting when we talked about this mountable concrete island, the new island that you added.
Yes.
What about snowplows? That was his concern.
Well, I mean, it is harder, but it is a mountable curb. I mean, it's...if you drive on it, you'll know you drove on it, but it's not a...it's a mountable curb, and the snowplow just has to miss it. I mean, we tried to leave pretty good space in here, but yeah, I mean, it's...it would be easier to plow without it, but we've conceded that it provides a value to try and discourage people from doing this, so we put it in, and the owner seems to be willing to accommodate that.
Okay. The other comment is, looking at the landscaping plan, I'm happy to see all of the additional shrubs and trees, and I'll go back to the comment that was made over on the other side, as long as it's kept and maintained, and that's obviously not an issue for us here in the planning board, but, you know, it does...it did get kind of run down looking there, and certainly, this is going to be a revitalization. That's all for me.
Okay. Michael?
I think the landscaping is quite nicely done. It's a great variety.
Pull your mic down also.
Bring my mic down.
Is this better? Yes. I got it.
At the Hudson Avenue entrance exit, there are six eunomus, latus compactis...come on, Michael, name it. Burning bush, thank you. Burning bush. But even though they're dwarf, those dwarf, and you help me, Larry, those dwarf will get six, eight feet, won't they?
I think the dwarf gets about this height, isn't it? The dwarf one, burning bush?
Yeah, I think the dwarf is smaller, and we can check on that with their landscape supplier.
Okay. My only concern would be site...
Site distance.
Otherwise, it's really a nice plan, yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, too. You had very good reasoning and explanation for why you kept the westernmost island, and I think that's all we were looking for, is to get some greater landscaping consideration, and you've accomplished that. I do think now with the revised island location, it's going to be very difficult to turn left, and I think you've pretty closely accomplished what we're looking for in that area, making it very uninviting to turn left on that entrance from the south. At this point, I would like seeing nothing else from the board. I'd like to open it up to public input.
Richard Barone, 154, all the drive. One purpose of landscaping, gentlemen, I believe, is to soften the view of the impervious surface area of any project. There are other purposes, of course, drainage and so forth. That purpose is countered, however, when the landscape is cluttered with signs, willy-nilly, anyplace. Complaints have been filed against this McDonald's over months, if not the last year, year and a half. Nothing has been done. The signs were illegal, seven-to-10-foot-high flags, which the town code prohibits, period. There were signs, small signs, stuck into the ground with wire. These are temporary signs, by the way. Complaints were filed. The code department never indicated that they had permits or an approval by the town. Banners on the building without permits. It's my understanding from talking to an employee of the town that supposedly a permit can be granted for a banner forever, which disturbs me, but I haven't checked that code yet. I'm tired of seeing companies like McDonald's. The owner's not here. There's an agent. Can he obligate the applicant, which is the corporation? he obligate the applicant, which is the corporation? My concern is, they come here hat in hand and agree to everything, but then they go do what they want to do. And you, gentlemen, don't do anything about it. In this sense, you're not the enforcer, I grant you, but you could at least make them aware that what you're approving is the only thing they have approval for. Are you approving more signage tonight? That's a rhetorical question, of course. I don't think I've heard anything about more signage tonight, although I haven't had a chance to look at the plan. So I have a question, which I believe under the law of public hearings, I have a right to ask, and I have a right to have an answer from the applicant, not from the board. It's my understanding under public hearing, I have a right to ask that question and have the applicant respond to that question. My question is very simple. Will McDonald's comply with the town of Aronac quite sign code and not place any unapproved or unpermitted signs on this property? It's obvious in the past, I have asked this board to raise that issue with the applicants, and a couple of people seem interested in doing something, and all the rest of you sat on your hands, which was very disturbing to me. So that's my question, gentlemen. Will they comply with the sign code of this town and not place any temporary unauthorized, unapproved, unpermitted signs on this property? Because if they do, I can guarantee you one thing. We will place the name of McDonald's in an ad and indicate that they're violating the sign ordinance. Now, do you want that? I don't want it, but someone in this damn town better do his job. It's obvious the enforcement department is not, for whatever reason. So that's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Awesome question. I just don't think this is the place to vent about stuff that we don't enforce. I really appreciate his concern, but I don't go out and check about signs. I don't go out and see if it's there. It's just not my gig, not my job, it's not part of this job. If Mr. Brown has concerns, go elsewhere where it's appropriate.
I have a right to ask that question under this public hearing. I'm not asking you to do anything, Mr. Palermo. That was not my question. You are misleading this whole group here by bringing that up. I asked the applicant, not you, sir.
I didn't, what?
I'm not asking you.
I'm not impressing him.
I'm asking the applicant, and I asked Mr. Chairman.
All right, stand down, stand down.
To put that question to the applicant.
We've got your question registered.
Okay, gentlemen, two points I think are relevant, and, Richard, I appreciate your concern. Always, I think it has become a policy since I've represented this board, to clear an applicant to ensure that they are in compliance. To my knowledge, up until this evening, they were. They may not have been on particular occasions in the past. And I don't think it's inappropriate to ask and instruct the applicant that they should certainly, I mean, very often, people come before the board, and they sometimes don't even realize that they're in violation, and sometimes they do. And we always tell them, you know, you've opened the door. You've come in here this evening, we now know that you either are or aren't in compliance. We mandate compliance, and that's implicit in any approval that you give. So we will, I mean, the applicant is entitled to comment on your question at the public forum, and we always do that in any event. We always ask the applicant to comply. But at the same time, this isn't a referendum on town compliance and code. That's another, and I think that's all that Mr., that Michael meant, I don't mean to put words in his mouth. But, and, so two points. Always, always, applicants before this board are instructed and required to stay in compliance once they've come before the board or the other town board. And I think it would be the best, best policy to give the applicant an opportunity, once the public hearing is closed, to respond.
Is there anyone else from the public of which to speak in regards to this application? Seeing none, it closed the public input portion of our application. The applicant may address the board again?
In regard to his question, I guess the answer would be they should.
Sure.
That's all I can say, like anybody else.
Okay. And it would probably be helpful to have a discussion with your principal to make sure that that is the process in the future. And I'm not suggesting he has or hasn't.
Do we have any other questions or concerns that we would like the applicant to address? Seeing none, move on to motions involving seeker and preliminary and final, site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, regarding seeker, the matter of PB 1310-1, respect to secret, and with the input from that we've gotten, I move that this is an unlisted action and a negative declaration?
Unlisted, yes. Sorry, I was hearing unlisted and thinking type two.
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. I don't believe we had any conditions other than the applicant shall have no unlawful signage.
No, I think we have the condition regarding sign S2C. We want it to say all traffic with an arrow directing it to the east.
S2C to read. All traffic?
Yes. All traffic, yes. Mr. Chairman, are we going to put a condition, no unlawful signs, as a condition? It's implied in everything. It's implied in everything that they do, that they're following town code. You can also say.
Sitting on your hands, sir?
I'm sitting on my hands on this one, because I don't see that you can, you also can't have, I assume you can't have a helium balloon flying over it either.
I will strike that from the, with everyone's agreement.
Do we have to put everything that's unlawful, that has to be done, that can't be done in the town, as a condition for this, for this or any application? And the answer is no. The answer is, is that the applicant must follow town law, just like everyone else does.
Very well, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, given the, upon the matter of PB 1310-1, upon the matter of request by TY Lin International, acting as an agent for McDonald's USA LLC for revised site plan approval, to reconstruct a plus or minus 40-foot square building addition, reconfigure the drive-through with a second lane with related site improvements on premises 654 East Ridge Road in a C commercial district, given the condition as mentioned by Mr. Goder as it relates to that sign, I move for approval.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Greg. And it's preliminary and final.
Preliminary and final, yes. Just for clarification, the record.
It says revised in the motion, so I was doing revised and final. That works. Is that fine?
Did Ray say 654? Mr. Chairman, I also, I guess, it's 657 East Ridge Road, that's 675. Excuse me.
8675309.
Jenny, Jenny. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for investing in Aronac quite.
Reinvesting, continuing to invest in Aronac quite.
Yes, at the risk of getting shot, we got a whole bunch of minutes here we're supposed to, we got backed up on last one.
I don't have them with me.
I, we, since we have a little extra time, I think it's a perfect time to review meeting minutes.
You have those with you?
Although I do not have any of the copies in my folder.
You still have the preparer with you?
It's been brought up that we might need the preparer here? Is there any validity to that?
Might need to what?
The preparer.
I would ask legal counsel.
No, I just thought it would help if she was here, in case there was some changes to be made, so that she could make them directly.
I think that would be appropriate. I think that, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be appropriate.
You have a workshop in a week.
We can approve minutes at a workshop, is that correct?
Dan? They can approve the minutes at a workshop?
I'll let you know before the workshop.
Traditionally, we have not.
You have a pen? No. My preference is to use the workshop solely for what they sound like, but we'll talk about it.
Greg, we have three sets of minutes that we were, that we reviewed, I believe?
I got one from August 26th.
Yep.
And I got one from August 12th.
Right. And July 22nd.
July 22nd. And, I guess this is still July 22nd?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just to, so the July 22nd meeting, everyone was here with the exception of Peter and I, so someone else will have to move those. I don't know if anyone else has perused these. I wasn't here, so I couldn't, can't.
I don't have those with me. Would it be possible?
I don't have them with me.
Would it be possible?
Let's just do it.
Should do it at the next meeting.
We're, please. Defer them again.
Okay.
If we can, if we can, if everyone's in agreement.
I would move that that's what we do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Bernie.